Welcome to the Monday, twenty twenty-three Select Board meeting. Can we have a couple?
Right up here.
Yes, sir. And right here. Supposed to be here. Uh, with Kathy, I was absent. Um, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America.
And we are republi- for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up on the list is the agenda review and approval. Uh, we'd like to run by the board, um, appointments. That we add all appointments up for vote, uh, minus Charlie Tatum and John Masucci.
To the consent agenda.
Uh, to the consent agenda.
Because they haven't been reviewed fully yet? They haven't had a one-week review, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I would, I would feel comfortable, uh, with that, seconding that idea.
Probably on this week. We'll go global.
Um, yep, cut a couple.
Next up is public comment, and, uh, to review the orientation votes for public comments.
Absolutely, so meetings are open to the public, but public participation is limited. If you wish to be heard about the Select Board, please note that two public comment portions of the meetings speak to items on a meeting agenda and or matter pertaining to businesses select for. In addition, the public hearings may be scheduled for public comment on specific matters. Speakers must be residents of the town Barrington, property owners in the town Barrington, and or designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in town Barrington. When they are addressed and permitted to speak by the chair, speakers first need to recite their name and address for record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as a body, not to any individual member. Each speaker shall be provided a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Public comment shall be limited to fifteen minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the Select Board may not have discussed or taken a position on a matter. Public comment is not a to a dialogue between speakers, Select Board, and or the town administration. The chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all Select Board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments, or those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and will not be tolerated. Complaints about town staff should be directed to the town administration.
Public comment, anybody?
If you're participating virtually, you can press star six, uh, to unmute yourself on the phone or raise your hand using the feature in teams. There will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Good. Don't see anybody on either end, so we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. Uh, next on the, the list is public hearings and invited guests, uh, of the school board liaison before. Any from the school board here or online?
Doesn't appear so.
I'll comment. Okay, next for public hearings, library, project, site selection, vision, and humanities lands. So you have it all.
Fantastic.
And I'll confess, I'm wearing this mask because I'm, I'm in the last, uh, I haven't tested, I got COVID ten days ago, but I still tested positive this afternoon.
Okay, thank you for wearing it.
Um. Connor has a little PowerPoint for you. Uh, before we start, I think many of you have met our new library director, Liz Bolton, who came tonight. If you haven't, in the tan outfit there, you'll get to know her well, I've heard, over the coming years. So we wanted to talk with you tonight about, um, the work we've been doing on the library planning. Uh, as you know, the last time we had a community input session was towards the end of March. Um, had a lot of good feedback, um, uh, was a very lively session. People from, you know, I think birth or pre-birth to, you know, in their eighties. So we really got quite a cross-section of folks there. The, one of the main topics, of course, was where should a library be sighted this time around? We've been primarily looking at Ramsdale Lane and at, um, something in the town center. Uh, Connor, or Tiffany, whoever's got the, got charge there. So the unanimous decision of the trustee board, which met on May second with, uh, friends and, um, members of the foundation. Uh, the unanimous decision was to stay on Ramsdale Lane. The, uh, the advantages of that site are, you're very familiar with. It's next, well, shared space with the rec, next to the playground, next to the ECLC. So gets a lot of activity from the, um, uh, the families that are using those facilities. Uh, the town already owns the land. The, um, I said site is ready for building. Well, that really, uh, obviously more engineering is needed to be done, but we know there's not ledge there and so on. We already had examined that land with prior proposals. Um, the real advantage, the real, um, um, I think selling point became the sense of a community campus with all those facilities there. Many of us have had a vision of a, a lively town center around Caleb's Christmas stove. Uh, but a lot of the input we got particularly in March was concern about safety. You know, we don't have sidewalks yet, we don't have crossings, we have uncertainty as to, uh, when development will be progressing there. So a lot of people, particularly with, um, with youngsters, were concerned about the safety of the site. And others were concerned about the parking, the congestion in that area, particularly during commuting time. The other advantage of the Ramsdale we see is the collaboration we have with the rec department. Uh, shared use of parking, which we have now, we don't have enough parking. But again, with the playground, with their fields there as well as the libraries, we felt that that would again be another, um, event. And when we just looked at where do the public preferences seem to be? They were strong supporters of both the town center site and Ramsdale Lane. But Ramsdale Lane definitely was, was edging out the other alternative. So that's the decision that, uh, the trustees feel is gonna be best for the town. The other, um, discussion that we had, particularly at the, on twenty, uh, March twenty-fifth event, was talking about the need for community space. This has been a topic that has been, uh, debated and discussed for years. And as you know, in prior, uh, proposals for our new library, there was inclusion of a large, uh, community meeting room that usually was subdividable, was open after hours and so on. Um, but that is a lot of square feet and costs a lot of money. So, uh, there's still this strong sentiment for accessible space after hours. Um, again, with, with bathrooms, some people suggested a kitchen nook of some sort for activities, for programming. But the question became, does that have to be, uh, part of the library building? And we concluded that there are some other alternatives. It's always wise, we know the town is always looking at all the space it has and how we make best use of the space we have. Obviously, including this kind of space when we use the ECLC for larger groups. And if the, if we're successful at getting a new library, then the old library space becomes available. Certainly, rec has, um, uh, historically been interested in that space, although they haven't been as committed towards that, or they haven't voiced as much commitment to that at this time. However, um, Jesse actually came to our trustee meeting last week, which was a very valuable, um, part of the conversation. So we would really recommend to the selectmen that if we're successful at getting a new library, you really look at that old library space as the potential for a, I'm gonna say, community center of sorts. Um, our recommendation, obviously, with the end of the oversight of the town, probably. I would think you'd want it to be under the rec, they would use it. And if the library has larger programs, we would book it just like any other group. Um, it has that ability to be available after hours, it could look at security and so on. But, um, we just thought that was a good way to make that space available. Um, have it in that community campus title concept. Uh, it allows, obviously, the library to advise down our space. We would still need meeting rooms, whether it's, um, uh, for smaller programs, children's room. Uh, we always are asked for study rooms or, uh, groups that need to come in for some one-on-one kind of appointment. Uh, but we would not need to build a large meeting room. So that is really the, the report from the trustees. The other thing we are working on at this point, because the next steps for us would be moving into having a building committee that would work with the architectural firm, really, um, fleshing out plans and then ultimately looking at the cost of those, those plans going forward. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or field any comments you have at this point. The, the other things I will, uh, remind you that we had other topics that we discussed with the public at the twenty-fifth. We talked about interior design, we talked about sustainability. Um, there was a great deal of interest in planning for a, um, an efficient, you know, that's what was sort of sustainability. It wasn't just solar panels, but you know, it was really having a quality building that would have lower operational costs in the long run. And then internal design elements, that sort of thing. But that was, that kind of information will go to the building committee to really tease through as the process goes forward.
Any questions?
Back. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Roger, who is president of the foundation.
What do you use this?
That one.
That one. Okay. So, um, yeah, I'd like to, uh, uh, talk to and, and welcome you a chance to talk to the Select Board and, uh, the public who's in about where we're, where we're going, what we're thinking about in terms of funding, uh, this building program. I am Roger Gingrich. I live at thirty-two Peabody Way here in Barrington, and I'm president since April of two thousand nineteen, uh, of the, uh, Libraries Foundation Program. So the first thing I'm going to talk about are grant opportunities, uh, something we've looked at in the past. And Connor, if you can forward one slide. So I've looked at a lot of grants out there, more than fifteen, but I, I sort of, my cut point was to look at things that offered something a little more than ten thousand dollars. And, um, the other cut point was, what can we get some kind of a thumbs up or an approval on the grant before we, uh, go to, um, a vote in March of two thousand twenty-four? Um, that's a nasty catch twenty-two if you think about it. You have all the grants submitted, but you're not gonna hear, uh, from anybody, for the most part, until you got a thumbs up on the vote. And, uh, so I, my, my cut point was to look for that. And I came across this, uh, National Endowment for the Humanities Grant, and I'll say more about that in the next couple of slides. Applications that I've looked at, uh, include, uh, the McKinnich, the McKinnich Grant. We actually got a thumbs up on our last time through there, but we didn't get the vote. Thanks, but no thanks. Uh, Eversource, uh, and ESCO all have nice granting opportunities. I've talked to, uh, people from each of those, uh, three places, and, uh, they think that it's a good idea that they have a, a, a decision before we go to warrant and take a warrant forward, but they don't do that. That, that's just the way the, the big people in the crowd have written their way of funding. So, um, those that are not an option down there on the lower line are, uh, some of the big grant options out there. One that has been brought to my mind is the Mackenzie, uh, Scott Foundation. I've heard from a number of people on that. Mackenzie Scott, uh, you remember, was Jeff Bezos's wife. She got a handsome, uh, settlement for her divorce and is giving that money away, uh, hand over fist. But she knows where she wants that money to go. She does not have an open portal that you can submit grants to. Uh, they will come and find you. Uh, and, um, that's the way it is with the Kresge Gates and the Carnegie Mellon, uh, folks too. So those, uh, options are not, not viable. Next slide. So to look more i- in detail at this, uh, NEH grant, and I, and I do this because it's a complicated grant, it's a, it's over a hundred pages, uh, that you can pull up online to look at how, how this grant works. But I've summarized it now in two slides. So it's a major emphasis, as you might expect from its name, on humanities, which we're well set to provide as a major focus because the library has over seventy percent of its items in there that include books as well as audio and so forth, that are in humanities part of, um, what is, what is included under the definition that they use, including histories and biographies and so forth. They love to see collaboration in the community with the entity that's applying and the rest of the community. Well, we can satisfy them with a collaboration from the ECLC, the rec center, um, and also the Barrington Historical Society, which is, um, a, a apple just waiting to be plucked, uh, for this grant. Um, they have provided a very nice and strong letter of support. Um, we've also had in our past plans and are pitching strongly for, uh, the current plan to have a Barrington Historical Room, uh, where we can begin to curate some of the important documents that sit in the storage room here and that I'm told sit in many addix and closets throughout this community. Um, the grant calls for, uh, was pretty specific language, strong commitment and support from the town administration. And, uh, I have had conversations with Connor and the trustees, and, and I think we're moving strongly in that direction. A fundraiser, uh, fundraising plan that is robust. This grant, as I'll show you in just a bit, is, uh, part of its long name, is a challenge grant. It means we have to raise some matching money to get the money from the government. And so let's go to the next slide. So here's the way it works. There are three levels of funding, levels one, two, and three. I'm gonna focus on level three, which is called the Chair's Special Awards, because I think that's where, as they say, the money is. Um, but I think that is fit, uh, funding for what we're looking for. I think our narrative in this brand is very, very strong. And I've talked to people at Kittering, who won one of these grants a couple of years ago. I've talked to people down at Mont Pleasant, who've shared, both of these have shared their grant applications with me. And I've talked with them, um, and read their grants through. And I think our, our grant application is very, very strong, even in comparison. Um, which is why we've decided with the trustees to move this, um, target up to this Chair's Special Awards, which is a granting of five hundred and one to one million dollars. We've chosen eight hundred thousand to be the sweet spot, if you will, not to seem too greedy, not to, uh, to, it just seemed right. And I'll go through the arithmetic in just a bit. The grant deadlines, yes, uh, May seventeenth, that's just about nine or ten days down the road. And, uh, I'm all set to file it. Um, I need some more information from our, um, the building end of our, uh, team, if you will, the architects and so forth. Um, but I think we'll have it there to file on the seventeenth without a problem. We get a notification of funding opportunity, a so-called no-fo, from, uh, the NEH mid-December. They tell us at that point, you've done a good job, we like what we see, we're telling you, you're, um, probably gonna get funded, but we need another couple of months to look at the details. So they've got an application in front of them. But now they're gonna dig down a little bit deeper and to say, uh, you know, well, is that real? This fundraising team that you've got, is the building team real? Or is it the town really behind you and so forth? So by, probably by March one, if not earlier, we will hear that we're not only, uh, we've not only, uh, got the funding opportunity, but that the money is going to be coming our way. The period of performance, as you see, which is when the grant can start, when they can start writing checks, is March one. They can only write checks if we've got matching money. And that four-to-one ratio that you see up there is what we're talking about. So if we say we want eight hundred thousand dollars, we need to match three-point-two million dollars to get that money. And they will start writing checks as soon as we can pony up with enough money to get it. It turns out that legislatively appropriated money from the state, county, or town, as in a warrant, is a suitable match in terms of the dollars. And so, and, and I've called and talked to them about specifically. So if we had a voter-approved bond for X number of dollars, that could stand as the match. Absolutely so. So. Sorry.
That's it?
Yeah, so, uh, the request there was for eight hundred thousand dollars and, um, and, and that's where we stand, uh, until we are, have submitted the grant and then have a waiting period. We intend to do some fundraising in that waiting period. Um, but, but there's further discussions that have to come from you guys and, and from the trustees and so forth. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, is this, uh, three decimal two million? Will that include the money that's already, that half million dollars that's committed?
Yeah.
Um, that's been committed for the last four years.
So there's a subpoint down there. The matching funds must be received after October twenty-three of two thousand twenty-two. So the cash that we have on hand, three hundred-plus-thousand dollars in cash, is not available to count against this. The, uh, I don't know, and they don't specifically address gifts and kinds, but pledges that were pledged back then, but now come forward and we say, okay, we, we need to see the cash, that could count for that.
What's that number, about two hundred thousand?
It, it's about a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Um, every pledge or every, sorry, every grant, sorry, every gift or pledge has to be signed for in a certified, uh, manner for this, uh, for the audit that will take place. That it's a very, um, bureaucratic kind of scheme they run.
And the money that you're, but the cash that you're talking about raising would count for that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Um, with the grant that you're requesting, are there any administration fees that come out of that eight hundred thousand? I'm thinking of like, uh, when we use, you know, Community Development Finance Authority, there's a twenty percent, uh, administration fee. Is there an administration fee that would come out of the eight hundred thousand?
Um, there is not a fee assigned by them, but they do, in the grant, ask you to name the, um, finance director and the, uh, legal consult that you're gonna use. And, uh, but there's no fee assigned to them.
Okay.
Now, you said that if the library goes on board, that's good enough for them? It doesn't have to be voted in, yes or no?
It has to be an approved, Lauren.
Yeah, the match money would have to be approved by, if, if it's going to be used for match, it has to be approved by the voters.
So when is our election? Second Tuesday in March. So, second Tuesday in March. So it'll be after the first March, the, at that.
Correct, correct, and this.
Is that okay?
Yeah, the, the deadline, well, they're not, I, I see what you're getting. So if, if we, if the bond came up and it was voted down, that's the source of a significant part of our match money, we would not be able to move forward. And that would be discovered by them in, in that, before they write the first checkout timeframe.
But, you know, you said the first March, they obviously won't have the vote on that by the first March. So that date of one March, only it goes to one June, when they're gonna consider it.
Well, it's between the December, when they make that no-fo thing, that no, no, the funding opportunity is the thumbs up. They then begin their investigations of the applications that they gave the no-fo to. And between that and March one is when they make the final decision. Yes, we've got the cash for you and we'll start writing out checks.
If, if we're casting.
Correct, that, that's gonna be a contingency, that's exactly right.
Cool.
Would we require both a warrant article for the three-point-two and a warrant article to apply for and accept the eight hundred thousand? Both of those would have to be accepted by the residents of Barrington?
Excellent question and kind of two separate answers. So one, uh, tonight, the Select Board is asked to consider two things. One thing is the Select Board to authorize the pursuit of this grant, which I'll discuss more in a minute. But if the, um, if the no-fo is received, right? And that's going to be listed in the warrant article as a funding source, eight hundred thousand dollars. There still needs to be a raise and appropriate for the total amount of the project. So let's say the project's four million dollars, just to keep the numbers clean. The, the question would be to ask the voters to raise and appropriate four million dollars for a new library. Eight hundred thousand dollars to come from the National Humanity, the Humanities, National Institute of Humanities Grant.
National Endowment for the Humanities.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Uh, and to authorize the issuance of three-point-two million dollars of bonds.
Okay.
And so the funding sources, just like with the, uh, in previous bond articles with the fundraising money, it said two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from the Barrington Library Foundation and X number to come from bonds. But the total number is still the first number, still the reason appropriate. And that is the voters accepting that money, to your question. So that is required, but it can be all in the same court.
Understood.
And Tracy, to that point, there is some fairly specific language that is suggested in the grant, in the grant information about how that warrant gets worded, so the, it's absolutely transparent to the voters, how and where that money comes from.
The, the performance period going up through five years, is that five years extended all to us acquiring the match? Like, if the warrant article didn't pass or wasn't on the ballot in year one, and we got the grant funded, could we apply for that warrant later and then come back and?
So my understanding is that they will give out the money as we provide the match to them. So i- if in year one we have five hundred thousand, uh, sorry, a hundred thousand, they'll give us a hundred thousand from that grant. We have five years to make that one-to-four match. And, and so we'd have to come up with other, other money sources.
So if, if the warrant happened to fail on the first year, it doesn't mean that that grant goes away. We still could, up to five years, have, have access to it.
We have to think, think through that one carefully, just, just because of what would be left on the other side unpaid for if, if the grant failed.
So as I'm understanding it, and I do understand that costs have gone up, the two things I'm hearing is that the size would be scaled down to what, about ten thousand square feet?
I think, Susan.
That's sort of, that's what we're assuming, but again.
So size, yeah. Okay, so potentially size has been scaled down, but the budget itself, and again, I understand what we're dealing with, with costs, would be in total with the five hundred thousand that the foundation has raised and this four million. And you would be able to then only have a municipal bond for this large infrastructure project, which I assume will last thirty years? About thirty years, three-point-two million over thirty years?
What you're talking about, the mortgage, if you will?
No, the, the life expectancy of a large infrastructure pro- project like this would be about twenty to thirty years?
Expect, we'd be talking with the Select Board and the town administrator about.
Yeah.
Um, as to how many years you're, you're paying that off.
Uh, I, no, I, I'm thinking of the life expectancy of the building itself.
The life expectancy of where we are now, it's supposed to be like ten years.
Yes.
Or twenty-three years.
Yep.
So, and I can't remember what the life expectancy of that building was supposed to be in the first place, probably thirty years, and now it's fifteen years.
Okay.
So, um, it's, I, I don't think, Tracy, I can really forecast. I'd like to say it's gonna be a good thirty years, 'cause the way the town is growing. I have no idea what the needs and demands are gonna be.
Sure.
Twenty years from now.
It's just, for me, like a value thing, so between about a hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand for the year of use. It's just for me like a value thing, so between about a hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand for the year of usage for this brand new infrastructure with. I assume top line technology in it. That's how my brain is is approaching it.
Previously, we'll talk.
Almost fifty years? Okay.
That was my remembers, obviously, it's different, it'll be different now. But I guess it'll be fifty years, it's a better number than thirty.
Yes, and we are growing.
Clear about is we're not anticipating, I have no anticipation right now, I don't have enough information to be able to say. One million dollars plus, you know, four or five hundred thousand from the foundation is going to cover all the costs. I really don't know that at this point. The only frightening number that I have heard from our architect was in the past several years. Construction costs have gone up by thirty seven percent.
Okay.
So until again, we're sitting and doing that planning with a building committee and then figuring what we have to have. If Brian and people talk as much as we can, but until we get into it, I don't think we make this clear sense.
Understood. A lot of good work.
So there are two action items for the select board to consider. First, as I mentioned, is the authorization to pursue the grants. And the reason this is important is because, as you heard, Mr. Gingrich, he has donated his time to apply for this grant, but it will need to be administered. The finance administrator and myself would spend time on it on the staff and and there would inevitably be documents for the town attorney to review. And so the proposal is for the select to operate to do this grant with the understanding that staff time would be used to administer it if we receive it. And the second piece is there's a draft letter of support. And so the second piece will be for the select board to authorize the issuance of a letter of support in pursuit of this grant.
Can we read that letter out loud to the public so that they know what the select board would be committing to? I'm sorry. I would be comfortable with that, Mr. Chair, personally.
Okay, so I'll read this first. As resident of the town Barrington and now select board members, we are more than aware of the long and rewarding journey the Barrington Public Library has had since its founding in that seventeen ninety five. Our town has long ago outgrown the library's space. It is occupied since nineteen seventy three. As the town's population has during that period grown from about one thousand eight hundred fifty to nearly ten thousand. The library foundation and trustees have undertaken the third campaign since two thousand nineteen to gain the support of a super majority of voters to fund the building of a new library. That will serve its citizens well into the twenty first century. We understand the difficult task of gaining that support and the cost of living is high in our current economy is burdened with uncertainty. At the select board, we are committed to finding all reasonable ways to help get this library built. We commend your strategy of pursuing the national endowment for humanities, infrastructure and capacity building challenge grant. And understand the NAC departments. Further, we understand that with proper wording suggested by the grant guidelines, money provided by the town. Through voter supported bonds can be used as restrictive funds for the match. Please accept our encouragement as well as our strong support and commitment to the success of this project.
Thank you for reading that. I'm I'm very happy to hear. That the pursuit of a very large grant has taken place. I think it is definitely what our residents have asked for. And I appreciate that you also took an exploratory approach to people's needs and listen to where. How large and what other options were available for this for this building.
She's saying favorable things.
Operate utilization of town personnel resources to administer the NEA. Library grant, if we're already, and design library support.
I I would make a second on that motion and yes, hard cough, yeah.
Would you say more of that?
I just want to say I do see that there's a hand up online, the select board's only entertaining comment from the public during the two public comment sessions. We've had the first one, but if you stick around to the end of the meeting, there will be one just for the select board to adjourns. I just wanted to make sure you knew that we did see.
Okay, so consent agenda, we said that we were going to add, we'll add in. Pete, all appointments up for both minus Charlie Tatum and Donovan Succi. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a meeting? We'll call a vote.
I'll clap eye.
Just to clarify, the I think you just made your first motion about the library to operate town personnel. Did you do want to?
Be included. We we Red has written the motion.
I started reading your.
Red has written the motion.
Okay, well, I'm pretty good as well. Thank you. My apologies, David. My apologies.
Okay, so Charlie Tate in discussion. Mr. Tate is seeking reappointment and also a member of the conservation commission, his previous alternate term expired in March. An alternate member of term expiring in twenty twenty five.
Just that I absolutely appreciate our residents volunteering for a variety of committee and boards. It's a lot of work. And it's done with their head and heart in the right place, so.
Okay, the Donovan Succi. Discussion, Ms. Succi has previously served on the planning board with her term having expired in March and all that term expiring in twenty twenty six is proposed. The discussion. In real. I think they got some log meetings over there and she's done. Thank you, Don. I think she was. I'm back there. All right, on to E, classics and private road building policy discussion. At the February fourteenth, twenty twenty two meeting, the select board adopted a new class six of private road building policy. At the meeting, at the meeting on April seventeenth, the select board formed a committee to review the policy and recommend any changes specifically. They're asking for the committee to be considered. So there were seven applicants.
And how many do we need, Vice Chair?
We need to vote on three. That makes discussion, discussion. So I'm going to ask you guys to see if we could pick out the three that we want to have up for a vote from our next meetings.
And to be clear, Ron Aller, you have his application. He was the nominee from the planning board, so he will represent the planning board. You don't need to decide on him tonight. It's choosing three of the six. Mr. Mock, Mr. Tessier, Mr. Watson, Mr. Thibodeau, Mr. Hall, Mr. McDeesha. So three of those to move towards the second step of the process next.
Which I think we have three representatives from the Berry River Road. Association.
David Mott being one, okay.
David Mott.
And a board member of Longshares Law Association, longtime resident, yeah.
Bob Tessier, he's been our builder, while he's builder and playing board, Mr. Thibodeau. Zoning. Mr. Watson is a builder as well.
I felt like that. Yeah. I thought that that was an for me at least, interesting and able to give input from a different perspective. From Mr. Watson, I think is a positive.
Yeah, I thought that was huge how he kind of designed the life as a soul ball.
I think it's, I think I'll agree with people from Long or Ryder seem like really good people, but I think probably, you know, just pick one of these people.
I would agree with Dan's approach, yeah.
I suggest to ask themselves and make a couple of them.
So John.
Before the meeting on the twenty second, between now and twenty second.
Yeah, if they amongst themselves want to, so yeah, John. At three thirty two, Longshore has some experience as a road agent, which I think is valuable. A master road builder, McNeil, great experience. I mean, so yeah, maybe that's a good approach. Ask them to speak amongst themselves.
You guys could be okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
So we'll follow up and when it's up for a vote on the twenty second, we'll have the the self nominated representative.
From that group and then Ron would be an appointed member of the three and then we need one more?
Nope, Ron is separate.
Okay.
Need two more.
Okay.
Between Tessier, Thibodeau and Watson.
Yeah.
I think Dwayne with the way that he brought that up, I think he should be on there.
I I would I would comfortably agree with that as representation. So Tessier and Thibodeau, I know each of them very well, so I'm going to recuse myself and leave it to the three of you. They both have excellent skill sets.
Don't know much about Mr. Thibodeau. Walked pretty well. Been in town a long time, been a part of the. Been a part of planning. Mr. Thibodeau, I think he was on zoning.
He still is active zoning member, so very aware of what the challenges are. So I again know them both personally very well and either one of them is an excellent choice, so I'm passing the buck to the three of you on this.
Do you have zoning board?
No, so you have one planning board representative. You do not have a zoning board.
Well, yeah, the planning board representative is because the statute says that classics and private road applications have to be recommended. Have to be reviewed and recommended by the planning board. The zoning board doesn't have any active involvement, so the select board did reserve a spot for a zoning board member.
Well.
Yeah, so yeah, I do need to catch up. I did want to say one thing actually about the zoning board, which I didn't. Been considered as previously, but the RSA six seventy four forty one, the statute that says go to the planning board, go to select board to get a permit, classics and private road. That can be appealed to the zoning board. And so the zoning board does have a role in the process. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing when it comes to a seat on developing the policy. Because it's, you know, not discussing an individual application, I don't think it would be inappropriate, but that would be the only role the zoning board would have. Is in an appeal of a decision of the select board.
That is true. The buck stops there.
Yeah, so I would propose Mr. Tessier. I I second that. I don't know. We can. So we have the three. Berry River, which is the fields. Who and Mott. Watson is selected, so it's between Tessier and Thibodeau. That's our that's our last decision, so.
I think you had a first and a second on Tessier.
Okay.
And I'm I'm accusing myself.
So but those are the three we're going to move forward. Okay, understood. Thank you for that. And I will say that the this committee will be a some committee of select board. It will be open to the public. Anybody who was interested in participating in the committee or who has feedback is welcome to attend meetings. I'm sure the committee would be interested in hearing their input that they have. They just want to have a vote when it comes to recommending to the select board.
And just let the folks know, I'm myself on the committee. I am now the liaison for the committee.
Okay.
Not a voting.
Not a voting number.
Excellent.
There's a sport, so feel free to reach out to me as well. Staffing board.
Super. So here we are at the first meeting in May. We have a few work anniversaries to reaffirm. John Mallett in the fire department, that started twenty five years ago. It was fantastic. Ken Carracus, our town clerk, started in the town Barrington twenty three years ago.
Wow.
Continues to be elected as our esteemed town clerk. Her staff did a fantastic job. Wendy Rowe was hired in the library nineteen years ago this month. Almost over sixty years, just the most first three employees ever experienced, which is fantastic. Charlie Kilgore and Richard Wentworth were hired in transfer station five years ago, Joe Spinney in the fire department five years ago. And then Gary Brock and Gaten Lambert started in the fire department two years ago. So appreciate the tenure of those employees. The select board committee assignments, so the chair and I, the vice chair met on Monday to finalize the agenda. She reported that on the committee assignments. I'll just read through them real quick. So Chair Capiello will continue in her role as the planning board, the select board representative to the planning board. Vice Chair Sakosha will stay with the recreation commission. He has picked up the technology committee. And he has also picked up the being the alternate planning board member. And importantly, he can only serve as an alternate to the select board ex officio. So in Joyce's absence, he will be a member of the planning board. Select person Man Trek will continue with the school board, has picked up the library trustees. And will continue with the budget committee and transportation recycling center committee. Select person Gibson will continue with the conservation commission and trails committee, the energy committee and the town lands committee. And select person Parrot Pro will continue in her role as the chair of the zoning board. Moving on, training opportunities, I continue the list here. A lot of these are in the municipal association trainings. And we'll just highlight that two days from today, in this room, we're bringing the municipal association here to provide a right to know workshop. A great thing about that is it gives the opportunity for question and answer and to really tailor the right to know training to the boards. And activities of the town Barrington. There's some great nine use trainings there as well. Moving on. Former strategic planning, so at the last meeting, the select board said, yes, it's a great idea. We want to do another strategic planning session. We'd like it to focus on longer range goal setting, which is fantastic. So I've connected with a facilitator, Sarah Reitzman is her name. And she was not available the day that the select board had originally thought, which was June twenty sixth, which was a Monday. But we talked, checked people's schedules offline and June twenty seventh, which is a Tuesday, we'll work. So we'll plan on that. What we did the last time is we met early, ordered sandwiches, I think at Caleb's Country Store, George Caleb's. Had dinner and then started the strategic planning session. I would expect the same thing. I don't know if we wanted to meet at five thirty to eat and then six for the session or six and six thirty for the more traditional start time. But if you have feedback, you can let me know.
We'll go to six, six thirty sometime.
Okay. Meet at six, start the session at six thirty. Great. So what I did is the chair had reached out to each of you individually to talk about goal areas to focus on. And this will give me the ability, me and staff, staff and I, that for me, one of those, just say, well, I'll make sure to catch them. The ability to prepare some materials ahead of time so that when we meet and do this goal setting process, we can really dig into the action items, the impediments. And we're not stonewalled by, oh, well, is this possible or hasn't this already been done? So we'll try to get some good materials prepared ahead of time. So if you see something that's not on that list that you want to focus on, drop a note to me or the chair and and we can add it to the list to focus on. But we have a pretty comprehensive, yes, as exists, I'll read through it really quick, but municipal facilities, specifically the library and public safety building. Communications, a revaluation of the tech district idea, utilization of town owned property behind Liberty Truck. And infrastructure, including the Richardson Pond Dam, implementation of the master plan specifically to preserve Barrington rural character. And then succession management and staffing. So if there are any questions, I'll move along. Super. School demographic study. So you remember back in January, the school board asked the select board to fund. Half of the cost of their enrollment study, their demographic study. And at the January twenty third meeting, they said, yes, we will. And so it looks like that report was completed on March twentieth. The superintendent shared the copy of the report and she presented that to the school board on the April eighteenth meeting. So I have a copy for you here. I've read through it. I have certainly a lot of questions. There's some good information in there. But I certainly need some help parsing it out. And so I've asked either a representative from the New England School Development Council or the superintendent. And so I've asked either a representative from the New England School Development Council or the superintendent, uh, to present on the details, uh, so we make sure that we can incorporate, um, the, the findings in our decision making, uh, but I haven't heard back on that yet, so I will keep you posted. And I know Dan had attended that presentation, uh, so he might be best suited to parse out the details if we don't have one or the other.
It's somewhat lonely study, uh, my interpretation is somewhat lonely, they only talked about those items that were in development, not able to for potential for.
For new housing units.
New housing. And so depending on how that their formula, they say there will be no growth from the schools basically through twenty thirty two. But they didn't include a lot of the new housing, which may have to increase that number, interest in number of people in the community as well.
So that we need to look at the details.
Hmm.
Quite interesting. Their, their formula on how they.
I know you got late last hour.
When I, what I derived from it was actually that other communities throughout New Hampshire are losing, um, student enrollment, they're seeing a decline in student enrollment based on the birth rate, and that Barrington is lucky enough that with the housing growth, we will remain stable, we likely will not be losing students, and that we will continue to be as we suspected. We've had other conversations about this, we will continue to be, um, a community that people want to live in, want to move to because school choice certainly impacts that for people with children. That was, that was.
Yeah, the birth rate's coming.
Yeah. Gonna.
Come out neutral.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why I say, if we're.
Yeah.
Clear about the new housing.
Yeah.
Will those people come in with children?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. New Hampshire's lost something like thirteen percent with some, well.
Yeah.
In the last ten years.
Yeah.
But Barrington is held pretty steady.
Yeah.
Historically.
We're growing by staying the same.
Well, incom- comparatively to other communities, that's exactly what the study says, basically.
As I recall, the, the master planning set, or the, this is the last time that they struck county redevelopment, had a lot of doing with bias, let's say. I don't know, if those are available in the report and how it might compare to our ease.
The trouble is we don't, we don't, don't, haven't heard a lot of questions that I wasn't able to answer. I was gonna answer the questions, or ask the questions there, but after, again.
I'll just look for them in some strategy.
Yes.
Uh, so hopefully more to come on that.
Okay, the master plan chapter update committee?
Yes.
Uh, the planning board has created a subcommittee, um, with charge of updating the housing chapter and town's master plan. I don't know if anybody on this board may be interested. Uh, the following is an invitation for residents to be a part of the committee. Uh, the town of Barrington seeks votes for the master plan update, uh, uh, Barrington residents who would like to lend a hand in shaping Barrington's future. Uh, volunteer to help guide the development of the latest chapter of the town's master plan, the Barrington Planning Board and Land Use Department are looking for Barrington residents interested in serving on the steering committee that will prepare the update to the housing chapter of the town's master.
So if, I don't know if anybody else on the select board's interested in serving on that committee, but I have the least number of external roles with just zoning and select board and would be very happy to participate in that.
Yes, and I figure you have some, some great paths in helping with that in other towns and areas. Any further discussion? Have we had anyone?
Yes. Yeah, and I think so, I printed you all a copy of our tax bill insert, um, one of the things that you approved on the consent agenda with the issuance of the tax warrant. Uh, we actually credit to Tiffany, um, she finished this today, uh, it will go out with tax bills on May twelfth. Uh, but there's a whole, the front page of this, uh, the bottom two thirds is all about getting involved in land use, uh, either the zoning board, the planning board, or this master plan chapter updating, um, and I think that's, it's really important, um, to mobilize residents, especially residents that are interested in seeing Barrington, uh, become what they want it to or not become what they don't want it to. Uh, this is the way to do it, to get involved and participate in the process, make sure your voice is heard, uh, we're government people, but the people have to show up, tell us what to do, uh, and this is the best way to do that, so, uh, we have had some interest in the housing chapter specifically, uh, and, and a perfect example, people call me frequently, you know, to compliment the town or sometimes to complain about things going on, and and I'll always challenge them with the opportunity to get involved, and there was a gentleman, I have no one named, but a recent, um, residential subdivision, it's going in near where he lives, and he stopped by and saw him, he's like, you know, this really bothers me, I've lived in town my whole life and I, I, I don't like to see things like this. And so we talked about some of the specifics, but then I said, hey, look, there's a housing chapter of the master plan, and they will have a subcommittee and look for citizen input. If you'd like to, to be that voice of, I've lived in town my whole life and I'd like to see things a certain way, show up, here's the first application.
Excellent.
And so it's opportunities like that to, to get people involved, and, you know, he's, uh, has a young family, he works, but, uh, willing to volunteer his time to see the community become, uh, or stay what he wants it, uh, how he wants it to stay or become what he wants.
Uh, for any more information on that, uh, feel free to contact with us at price, shoot our town planners, so that would, uh, be our phone number, six six four zero one nine five or planning@barrington.nh.com. Uh, anyone interested in serving is, please ask to respond by Monday, May eleventh.
Fantastic.
You want to do some pool office? Interesting.
So you've already signed the, I said, I handed out a corrected oath of office, my correction to that one, or previously approved, uh, meeting. And then from the consent agenda, we'll have the flag application from Stars and Stripes, Barrington has put gravel permit and five proofed oops.
Excellent.
Okay.
Excellent, the agenda, old business, I don't believe we have any old business to go over.
Um.
Just that's.
Mi- Mr. Vice Chair, could we, um, have, where can people mail checks for Stars and Stripes? I think that's important. We're coming up on Memorial Day, and I think an opportunity should be made for people to mail checks in if possible to support, um, that program and pay for, uh, a, a flag.
Absolutely, please.
Stephanie Dimkey, Stephen James wrote in Barrington, I, I'm a part of Stars and Stripes Barrington, I mean, I am the Stars and Stripes.
Yes.
Party one here.
Yeah.
Short meetings. Um, yes, so it's a completely donation funded project, this is not at all supported by the town taxpayer, taxpayer money. So I do appreciate every donation that is made, big or small. Um, in the past, I know the town has been wonderful about, um, having checks being mailed here, I'm going to ask Mr. Reviver if that's still okay.
Great.
That you can mail them, attention Stephanie Dimkey, um, and just put, you know, the town's new mailing address, which I apologize, I don't know, I had it memorized, P O box six sixty, is that the same? Okay, P O box six sixty, A I to New Hampshire.
Six, sixty, six, six, zero, got it, Barrington. And what is the cost of one flag and the post and what have you?
It changes year to year, it's pro- it used to be about eighty dollars by the time you have, because we have a stainless steel strap that goes around, then you have the bracket, you have the pole, the flag, the unfurling tube, and then the post at the end of the pole. Um, I'm assuming now costs have gone up over a hundred dollars a flag.
Okay.
And we have approximately, it's about sixty flags I put up every year.
Okay.
So.
So six thousand dollar cost if we were to make sure they stay beautifully.
And there are many, 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 every year, it's a, I'm sure Chief Walker, if he tell you from the banners, they, uh, even though they, they seem to be only up a short time, I mean, these are up from Memorial Day through, um, I take the ones on the utility poles down after, after Labor Day, the ones at the cemetery stay up till Veterans Day. Um, but yes, I replace, you know, at least twenty five percent of the flags every year, somewhere between twenty five and forty percent of the flags every year. And then it's kind of a game, I try to keep the other stuff going, and I've had to cut down poles before and trying to pick my own, tried to make my own fur- unfurling tubes one year, that wasn't super successful, but, um, you know, every year I try to.
Okay.
Kinda.
When the checks being made out too.
Um, so Stephanie Dimkey, and if you wanna write slash Stars and Stripes Barrington, I, some, some branches of the bank that I use are very good about it, they can see the history, um, Suzanne McNeil's also, uh, on the, um, account as well for, you know, transparent, transparent, transparent.
Transparency.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Purposes, so she can see anything that goes on in any of the transactions.
D I M K E.
Correct.
Okay.
Also.
And then Stars and Stripes on the memo line.
Yes, and I'm also in Venmo, and I have a Facebook page, so the Venmo, like little whatever QR code is on there. Uh, but if you look up Stars and Stripes Barrington on Venmo, it says Stephanie Dimkey, but yes, it says Stars and Stripes Barrington, and that's on Venmo, because I know many, many people use Venmo, obviously, so.
And the link to the Facebook page is in the town administrator report.
Oh, good.
Section for Stars and Stripes Barrington, so it's.
Great.
Pick up that link.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for, you have the application, so that's all set.
Yes.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
It's a donation in December of the audience.
Oh.
Love it.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Do business. Twenty twenty three, aiming. Mark, would you like to tell us? Tell us a little bit about what you think? Evening, dogs.
Good evening.
So, the paving bid. A little tougher this year because of the spread and price. Um, I, these paving games were with a, with a bang up price. Um, they basically more or less copied what, uh, advanced prices were last year, give or take a few pennies. Um, if you're going to ask me if I have a recommendation, a recommendation can only be, can only be placed on past experience. And the only past experience I have is with Advance. Uh, they've done a good job for us for the last three years. Um, they've shown a lot of goodwill towards the town. Um, I, there has been no bad experience with them whatsoever, they've been very, uh, easy to get along with. I know what their capabilities are, and they know what I require of them, it's, uh, pretty good understanding we have. So. That's, uh, that's my recommendation.
So from a high level, the, uh, paving proposal, refusal proposals, uh, there's a link in my town administrator report, they were advertised on March twenty seventh, uh, the bids were due April twenty sixth. Uh, there were three bidders, you have that report from the road agent, uh, I also provided a link, uh, in my report to each one of the full proposals submitted, uh, from each of the paving contractors. Uh, and so you have the recommendation, uh, letter from the select board or from the road agent, which goes into detail. Uh, but there's also a resident letter submitted, included in the package, just the habit, I forwarded that to you as well when it came in. Uh, and so, uh, we will call the select board decision tonight, uh, and just to remind you of the, uh, the process for selecting the roads, you remember a couple of meetings ago, Mark presented, uh, the paving plan for year two, uh, and select board adopted that. So that's kind of the road pathless, and that list always includes, uh, you know, a couple of extra roads, so if they get through the projects and, uh, funding, uh, is, you know, funding still exists, they, they put those other projects, move along, uh, but they've already started to work out on the roads today, preparing the roads, replacing culverts, uh, getting homes ready, so look forward to moving forward.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mark?
No, just a comment, which is, um, we have department heads for a reason, and we ask for their expertise for a reason, so I feel very comfortable, um, supporting our department heads in there.
I'm a firm believer in, uh, good, cheap, or fast, and you get to pick two. So. And, yeah, so people say, um, the, for twenty twenty three, paving did. Through, through policy, um, it's supposed to follow, earning, there's, there's. Definitely, you mean.
Absolutely. Yep, so the, yeah, the requirement is anything over ten thousand dollars goes out to bid, um, and it's a sealed bid, uh, we started a couple of years ago, we opened the bids at the town hall, so we can have a recommendation presented, we used to open them at select board meetings, uh, but yes, we open them at town hall, usually in the hallway, uh, but certainly in the public. Uh, and then it's the select board's decision, discretionary decision, uh, to choose among the bidders, um, and usually there's a staff recommendation that accompanies that, good question.
And I would second Mr. Mantrick's motion if discussion is finished.
Well, they'll vote.
Um, Markoff.
I. It's coacher.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you for thorough analysis.
Okay. Municipal boat launch grant discussion. Uh, the governor's office, uh, for emergency relief and recovery has a municipal boat launch investment program that this name would provide up to a hundred thousand dollars in funding with a twenty five percent match requirement for municipal boat launch projects in the state. The Ayers Lake Boat Association and Daniel Carter Road was identified as a possible site for the grant program. Additionally, the Richardson Pond access from the Goodwill parking area on, thank this, on Blue Downing, uh, could possibly, uh, could be a possibility as well. The mini- municipality is available to submit multiple requests through this grant program. Um, the Ayers Lake and Daniel Carter Road, um, as we know, we've seen, seen them in many meetings here. Um, I believe Connor had a discussion with the chair of the Ayers Lake Association, and is, he was, he came out and said that he's not, you know, he's not gonna shut the lake down, he, he wants to see the good access. So very cooperative, uh, which was promising.
They actually have a letter from the association, uh, and so the, uh, we were, the history of the kind of informal boat launch, boat access from Daniel Carter Road, Ayers Lake, um, predates me, predates most members of the select board as far as town involvement, uh, but more recently, the, the association put together a pretty comprehensive letter last year, making some recommendations to the select board in the town, um, how, on how to address some of the concerns that they have about erosion, best invasive species, uh, parking and traffic concerns, things like that. Uh, the road agent was able to be responsive and address all those concerns, but other concerns, um, were kind of too big to tackle, uh, without a more substantial project. Anyways, uh, this grant program was advertised by the governor's office, um, I had been kicking the tires, talking to the state, um, environmental services and others to figure out if this was a possibility, and then before bringing it before the select board for direction, reach out to the lake association in Camp Fireside. Um, as Jim said, I met with the president of the association, who's here tonight, another representative as well, uh, but they submitted a letter, so I'll read that real quick, um, just for your consideration. Statement for the town of Barrington and Hampshire Select Board, the Ayers Lake Association is committed to, and we are primarily driven to be good stewards of the lake, and whatever possible attempt to preserve its high quality water and abundant wildlife. We recognize and treasure that this is a community resource for boating, fishing, swimming, and other recreational activities. We are very aware that if the quality of the water is degraded by pollution or invasive species, then nearly all of these activ- activities will largely cease, or at least their enjoyment will be degraded. The degradation of the lake's water clarity and quality would also adversely affect the property values of lakeside and adjacent homes, which would result in significant reduction in property tax revenue. Consistent with our proposal to the select board, Ayers Lake Association, uh, for May of last year, we hope the town considers the impact of proposed projects planned to dedicate a road in the health, uh, in that the health of the lake is protected, that issues of erosion, runoff pollution, and potential interruption to invasive species progress. And that's Peter Drew's present in Ayers Lake Association. Uh, so the second, so that's, um, Ay- Ayers Lake, the second proposal was maybe Richardson Pond, um, at the Google parking area. The recreation director was already in talks with the trails committee and recreation, or the conservation commission, um, about establishing some sort of like a kayak rental station at that parking lot, that could be managed kind of wirelessly, like you get a code, you unlock the, the equipment, you can take it out to the pond. Uh, and so maybe less of an installation there, it's twenty twenty three.
Wow. Just wow.
So, um, yeah, so I added that to the list, just if, if we're going, if we're allowed to submit multiple applications and they're willing to fund multiple projects. Um, the folks, uh, at the Gopher office, um, said that they funded one project, um, and so they're. And so they're basically begging for applications. And so I think it's it's possible that if multiple projects are eligible, multiple projects may be funded. So looking for direction from the select board to prepare applications and to pursue. So I've got any questions?
Will the 25% match come from ARCA or incident fund or something?
Yeah, it's a great question. It can't come from ARCA funds because it's ARCA funds using, so you can't fund use that. So but there are other unencumbered funding sources that the town could consider. The seven and a half percent rebate from New Hampshire Retirement is one. The because it's a road project, there's some road funds created by the legislative session last year, or it could come from the operating budget depending on funding availability. The good thing is on timing wise, the period of performance for a grant would be, you know, would extend a number of years out. So I wouldn't anticipate that we would actually be pursuing a project until though sooner than next year, but maybe even later depending on engineering permitting. So it could even be something where we go to voters with a map and give them an opportunity to say, yes, you know, we we want to have a say on this stupid idea or not. So I suspect we may have time to properly budget.
And it's up to 100,000 per boat launch area.
Correct.
So we could identify Swains, Ayers, Richardson's Pond. Can we also consider like Stonehouse Pond and?
Stonehouse is a does not.
Wouldn't wouldn't allow us that area.
Yeah, so great questions. I I kind of went through it, as Jim knows, went through a number of opportunities and exploring possibilities. So one of the limitations is it has to be a municipal boat launch.
Okay.
So no improvements could be made to the Swains Lake Boat Launch because that's a state boat launch. No improvements could be made to the Stonehouse Pond Boat Launch.
Okay.
That's also a state boat launch and both operated by fishing game. The other big impediment to other accesses like Men's Pond, for example, the town doesn't own any property.
Do we own property on round or North River?
No.
Oh, so we have two spots and it two potential grants. Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, yeah, I'm not positive. We don't have more spots that could be considered, but I think this is the cream of this boat to the top.
Okay. And as I understand this, I'm hoping I understand it correctly, the Ayers Lake Association is in support of this and would like us to do this.
I think they said it best in their letter. I don't I I don't think that there was opposition, but I think the important points were iterated in the letter from last May.
Okay.
That if anything's done, it's done right with proper permitting and the safety of the lake and the
Understood.
residents.
Okay.
When are we looking at a kayak place in Ayers Lake? To grab a boat.
The spectrum, yeah. I don't know. I think all of the above. Maybe we've got, but like somewhere short of that on the spectrum. I.
I'm sure just to get it functional, so people are bogging down.
Yes.
That's why.
So, yes, it's the Daniel Cater Road right away. So it's like this weird intersection of the public water that's Ayers Lake. Natural mean high watermark is owned in public across the water and is below Daniel Cater Road right away. Fifty B owned to be, but those overlap, so there's no private property in between them. And so that's where the and so I had a lot of, I had conversations with the governor's office and the DPS, multiple divisions within DPS, to make sure that that arrangement was possible from a permitting standpoint from a grant standpoint, and there are no concerns. I mean, there's there are permits that you'll have to go through the process. But everybody's excited at the idea that it would lead to improvements to what exists now.
The other concern they had was Richardson Pond. So many concerns.
Yeah.
Might want to think about that.
So maybe just focus on an application for Ayers Lake, not for Richardson Pond.
I would just, yeah, I would do that.
You can always decline. You can always return the funds and you can always decline the funds. You cannot always ask again. So I would, I would, in my opinion, in my experience with state grants, you go for it. And if you decide not to pursue the project, you just turn the funds back over.
So we're they're looking for a nod. Do we, as a select board, want to give them a thumbs up to pursue?
I would say go for two separate grants for Richardson's kayak launch and for Ayers. And I'm assuming that you've done the research that $100,000 would solve and provide Ayers with an appropriate launch area. In other words, we're not going to pursue $100,000 grant and find out it's $250,000. And right, we've done some due diligence on this.
Yes.
Okay.
Because within the realm of positive.
Okay.
I think what I like to do before I spend too much time chasing something down, I want to make sure that the select board is comfortable in the direction that we're headed. So we're kind of at that preliminary stage, right? But like you said earlier, the the steps that apply for the grant will provide further clarity on what's possible, what impediments exist, what costs may be. And then further, once the, you know, grant is awarded and we start working on the project, there may still be points on that spectrum that we decide, hey, let's stop, let's turn around because this isn't headed the direction that we wanted to. And some of those decisions may be around scope. Is it one of those, you know, dock kayak launches on Ayers Lake that is like an assisted kayak launch and just kind of like that passive boat launch? Is it a trailer boat launch access? Those scope decisions, I think, are are yet to be determined. Too early to decide now, but.
I do think $100 or $100,000 towards either will will prove about what it is now. Is the back access of Major's Lake state owned?
The dam.
The dam. There was talk of a salt rent there.
You, living in the vicinity, you may have better information than anybody I've talked to. I have heard a rumor that is more than a rumor because it's I've heard it from multiple different sources and a little bit different. But there was a rumor that when the state took over that dam from Kachiko Mill Company or something like that, there was a conversation with the town that the state basically offered to work with the town to establish low access, a beach at the dam property. And the rumor is that the town turned it down. I haven't seen that in any town records. I don't know that there's a lot to that, but consistently people bring up the, hey, wasn't there going to be access down there? What I can tell you is that the state owns a very small piece of property down there, including the dam. And the access is across four pieces of property from a private road. And so there's a there's a beautiful gate down there with about a dozen locks daisy chained together to make sure that nobody that doesn't have those 12 keys can get through there. And so there isn't, yeah, I I think that.
Landmines, no, I'm just kidding.
There isn't actually a lock for sale down there, so.
There we have it.
How you get there, I don't know, but there's a lock for sale.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay, I have my direction. I appreciate it.
Next up is C. It's the Barrington Childcare Support Services Network. I think we all know that, you know, we have a town full of children and they lack childcare and stuff. Why don't you have a little bit more about this?
Yeah, that's great. So Donna, you can stay there or you can come up. It doesn't matter. But I have, would be Donna Masucci, owner of Barrington Village School, and Jesse Tennis, our rec director. And so this is, this is just one of those topics that every any reasonable person can get in a group in a room and agree that there's a problem, that there's a childcare crisis, we have problems. Our rec department has problems providing enough care before before and after care, has trouble finding staff. Same problems are felt with childcare facilities. It's the the demand is very high, the supply is very low, there's wait lists everywhere. It contributes to staffing problems because our families don't have childcare. Anyways, reasonable people can get in a room and agree there's a problem. The challenge has been, you know, for for some of us, I'll definitely say myself, but I know Jesse and to some extent Donna, although she's done a tremendous amount already, what can we do about it? And I don't think we have any silver bullet yet. But what we'd like to do is we'd like to work on it. And we'd like to use some town resources, not like money, but my time, the rec director's time, to try to get the right people in a room and and start working about working on it. What can we use for Barrington residents, Barrington families to address some of these childcare issues that exist? Our specific seat at the table, our spin in the game is really the rec department. Our rec department serves a critical role in this community in childcare, specifically before and after care. But it's a really tough thing that they do, that their staff work five hours a day in the morning, in the afternoon. Next to a bus driver's schedule, it's a terrible schedule to try to attract and and retain employees to do this. And they're taking care of dozens of kids. I mean, they really like a lot of kids. Anyways, we can talk for hours about the problems, but I don't have any proposed solutions. But what we'd like to do is we'd like the select board to support to start working on what we can do. I mentioned in our report here, the city of Lebanon, a couple of years ago, they kind of went through this process and said, hey, we see that problem. We agree it's a problem. We want to be part of finding solutions to problems. And they've really done a lot to pursue grants. They've received grants hundreds of thousands of dollars. They've implemented zoning regulations. They've done a lot. And so I'd like to get together with anybody that's interested and willing and start working on what we can do and hopefully bring back proposals to the select board, to the planning board, to the town in general about what we can do. To actually talk about it. I don't know if you want to add anything on your ship along tour or Jesse, I know you're online. But that's kind of the.
It's it's a collaborative effort between everybody. You know, even going as far as listing the different options on our website, on the social media pages, but it's it's really just trying help the unforeseen coming or seen coming, I should say. It's kind of no brainer. Yeah. Town has a mid like a look out for the poker as I can. Childcare is a significant problem. We need our foot's pretty cheap. I mean, it takes some time, especially Jesse's time. It's confusing as well, but, you know, there are people in town, but I think it's. Or whatever takes, but not for the individual. Some boys spend a thousand dollars, but I think right now it's all the time. Building, especially drilling, we may need to supplement them. Easy decision. So, and it's all we give them a nod?
Yes.
Awesome. Fantastic. So we have a tentative date with the planning board on May sixteen to go and kind of start the conversation and get them thinking about it. You think about from a land use perspective, every business or housing development that comes into town goes through that group. And if if we can work with them to be asking questions about, okay, so you're adding, you know, two dozen housing units. Have you thought about the childcare demand? Have you thought about when you're selling homes to these people, where their kids are going to be able to be taken care of, whether or not it's school, before they go to school, things like that? So we really want to kind of touch, touch all the ideas. I would welcome any select board member to participate in the conversation or offering, but the Carcy School did a great program a couple of weeks ago on childcare. The three of us all participated in that, that afterwards talked about it, so.
Do towns offer any tax incentives for home care?
It's an excellent question. So the the closest to that, it actually failed in the legislature this past session. It was a proposal to create a a property tax credit, which is basically money off a tax bill for childcare facilities. And so it would be optional, it would be opt in, which is fantastic. You don't have to do it if you don't want to. But we can go to voters and say, do you want to provide a $5,000 tax grant to childcare facilities in Barrington?
We could put that on board.
If we chose, but that legislation failed, so we can't do that. We don't have home rule. We can't create things that are allowed by the state. But that was actually an initiative from the city of Lebanon. So things like that have been talked about. At that session, we talked a little bit about what local policies could be set to help with this. The only the the only big thing that was mentioned was easing the process for in-home childcare. Licensing, not licensing, but for zoning regulation, so creating a pathway in zoning for in-home childcare rules. That's, that isn't a widely accepted solution to the problem, because of course you want to have quality, but you need to have quality when it comes to childcare. So so anyways, yeah, there there are tax incentives that the town has control over. The town could, the town supports nonprofit groups in our community that serve our residents, right? We contribute to homeless shelters, we contribute to Meals on Wheels, to Ready Rides, otherwise. You know, it could be that in a year or two years, this Barrington Childcare Support Services Network, it doesn't have much to do at all to town, but is a nonprofit and a group of people that get together and work on this. And maybe they receive funding from the town through the operating budget to to do what they do. Maybe it's putting pamphlets together for, say, this is how many, these are your options for childcare. These are their hours, these are their prices, this is their capacity, whatever.
Or mini grants for home providers.
Exactly. Yep. And and Lebanon did some of that, has done some of that with ARCA money and otherwise. So I appreciate the support to head that direction and I'm excited to report back on what kind of stuff we find out.
Nice things.
Personally, Matthew.
All right, now on to the select board member reports.
The zoning board of adjustments met heard a case for a variance in relation to a solar array placement. The variance was granted, allowing the homeowners to place a reposted solar array and with that variance, a recommendation was to be sent from the town planner to the planning board that sheds that fall under, I think it's 10 by 20 or 10 by 12, I'm sorry, I can't recall, 200 square feet that the article related to that indicate that solar arrays should not be placed on those sheds that do not require permitting.
Since our last meeting, Energy Committee met on April twentieth and May fourth, continuing to discuss Community Power Coalition. At the next select board meeting, Energy Committee will give a presentation on Community Power Coalition and proposal to have Barrington join that initiative. Jimmy Anderson, the the town facility manager, has been attending our meetings as well. And the Energy Committee working meeting, the department heads, the press town to discuss their energy question needs, concerns, opportunities, sadly coming up as well. Town lands met on April 22nd, discussing the Goodwill and Highway Department projects, also been looking and talking about the town's possibilities of expansion by acquiring lots adjacent to connecting town owned lots to make the town forest larger. Conservation met on April 27th. Had discussions on various proposals around the lake, also expanding town forests. And they've been working on an easement monitoring schedule. Gary Embry has put a lot into that. All of the towns. Conservation East properties have to be monitored on a regular basis. So that's all done by volunteers. And so thank you to all the volunteers that do that work. Conservation is meeting next, this Thursday on May 1st.
Excellent. Thank you. Such pleasure.
ABC is meeting yet, not in the transportation council meeting. I don't know how much was picked up. Did you ever get the final report on how much was picked up?
Are you talking about work day?
Yeah.
I had not heard. I can report back though.
Yeah, okay. School board, maybe on the 18th of April, they're going to have a work session in a regular meeting. There's permanent contract, the right to be the choose the end and choose on the end which is now, but hasn't attended. The NASDEC demographic study you've seen and Connor talked about a little bit briefly. Last day of school, the 23rd of June, they had to move it from fourteen because they had six off days and they come a little later.
Bless those teachers.
Uh, they do have a committee, special board and mission vision, five-year goals. Uh, kind of for two thousand sixty-four. Not with, on the trusted ships.
Okay. Um, the rec department, uh, they're gearing up the kit, they're working on a, uh, community programming ideas. Uh, in addition to that, they also have large software update, uh, at the end of the year. They're switching from the platform, uh, RecTrack to MyRec. Um, and I get to meet with the technology community. That is it for my report. Um, that, I would think, right?
Awesome. Want to follow up on, uh, one at the end, and I must, I just wanna thank everybody that came out and did the town for me yesterday on birthday, so it's, it's just like previous years, a huge success. Thank you to Aaron and all her crew for organizing it. I thought to wear a D L T shirt to play and we're handing out, um. Uh, anyway, I'm really glad to do it and thank you everyone. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, just one last, this is absolutely excellent, Tiffany, and thank you so much for keeping all the residents informed.
Ready. Uh, next up, I would like to open up public comment. I need the audience or anybody else, ready to, ready to hand it to online or if you're in audience, come on up. If we have a. Oh, we're up there. Stand up there or, or, or hand up a link.
Director Gaiman Reed from thirty-two Barrington Way, have anybody way in Barrington? Just wanted to say that, uh, a year ago, the, um, foundation with the library, uh, adopted. Route nine from one twenty-six down to one twenty-five. And, um, to date, we've collected a hundred and ten dollars in cash along that house. Just wanted to say that, that's a perk.
It's a perk to cleaning up, that's great.
I found my money.
They cleaned it up, stone fart, Valgo for years, nothing.
Yeah, you can.
That's great.
Warren Weaver. I'm bad.
All right, uh, we, you know, seeing no volunteers online and nobody in here, uh, we're gonna close public comment. And we're gonna actually venture a, I need a motion to enter non-public for person.
I don't believe ever non-public. All right, so whatever. I mean, one, two, three, two, now the book. You have second?
I'll second for purpose of personal.
Over.
We're popular.
Get to my interest. So, go, sir.
You know, we have it.